Turning in progress.
Hello.
Hi, Jules. Hi, Neil.
Hi, Jules. Hi, Harvey. Thought I should show up on time.
No, I didn't think so. Send another reply.
Pull up.
Let's do it.
Somebody else.
Call this next door to me here.
I replied it with, delivered to the wrong address.
No.
And I gotta call them now and tell them, right? Or what?
Yeah. Probably gonna need the order number.
I have it.
How is everybody? I'm just asking how everybody is.
Doing good, thanks.
Jules, is the rabbi gonna continue on the same Zoom call or we get to switch to a different?
Okay, same call.
I saw your comments today that on Paul's note.
Yeah.
And that's an area we're gonna have to wrestle to the ground, so to speak.
Yeah.
Hi, Stan and Bob.
Hi.
Hi, Neil.
Get the shop right lately, Bob?
Yeah, we were there a couple of days ago. What about you?
I stopped going the past few weeks. I'm just doing the curbside pickup again.
How are you?
Yep.
Well. You know, we're going in with our masks and, you know, hoping for the best.
Hello, David and Abby.
Hello.
Hi, David and Abby. I'm Larry.
Hello.
Good evening, Greenbergs. Hi, Paula.
One hand at a time, David.
What you could do, you do the early childhood wave.
Not at all.
Yeah, it's the, it's the early childhood wave.
Okay.
I mean, it's such a nice, this afternoon, we met the rabbi that's gonna marry Sam and Alex. He has to have a meeting with us and Sam's family. What a nice guy. We had so much fun.
Good.
Who was it?
He did three things. He made me smile, he made me cry, and he made me feel really good. So that's a good thing.
He's, he's based out of Kentucky.
Yeah. And he went to school with him at UTEC.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's.
That works out well.
So it's really kinda special. They asked him to marry him.
What is his name?
Um, uh, 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 I forgot. Have to look it up. I just kept saying rabbi, so I forgot.
Yeah, that's true. We kind of lose our first names when we graduate.
And your last names.
Excuse me one minute.
He's probably, he's a year older than Alex, so he's 33. He gave us our assignments and all that stuff, so.
That means it's real.
It is, finally.
Finally.
It's a, it's been canceled three times. This is the fourth time, so.
When I was watching that thing in Texas, I heard them calling out for Rabbi Charlie. I said, hey, how'd he get down there that fast?
Did you know his wife's Mountain Lakes?
What's that?
Rabbi from Texas, his wife is from Mountain Lakes.
Oh, yeah.
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 Neil, just before we get started, what is your father's name?
George or Gershon.
Yeah, well, I could use both of them, although George I knew. And Gershon Ben?
Ben Harav Natan Vidvora.
Natan Vidvora. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got some more people coming in. That's good.
Hello, hello. Hi, Neil.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Neil.
Hi, Ricky.
Hi, how are you? Hi, everybody.
Ricky.
Hi, Neil.
I have something nice to share. I'm dropping off two dozen more hats for Rise Up tomorrow. Not from a bunch of.
Thank you.
So I'm glad to be doing that there, you know.
That's terrific.
Paula, do you remember how many blankets you made when Elon was in Afghanistan for the baby?
I believe it was six.
Yep.
It might have been, yeah.
And he was only there like eight months, so you like made.
Really important to me that if I have something I can do to help people, then I can do it. But this is.
Hi, Jody.
In this case, I only made one of the 24. Other people made the rest.
Well, I wanted you to know that I'll always remember that.
Thank you. I hope the people still have them because it's pretty cold in Afghanistan right now.
Paula, Tom was going through his mother's house and he found a lot of yarn. If no one else in the family wants it, would you be interested?
Not for myself, but I know Lynn Katz was asking for it because she's one of the big knitting, one of the big hat makers, and she was looking for some donations, so yes.
Okay, well, we'll find out.
I'll send out a text message to my brother.
I have one or two skeins more than I actually need.
Okay.
Colors are right.
Okay, got the first page. And. Okay, well, I'm going to get started. And if anybody else comes in, we'll let them in. So I'm gonna begin by muting everyone. And as our custom, we'll begin reading in English, the opening bracha. The middle of the page on the left. Baruch ata Adonai, our God, sovereign of time and space, whose word brings the evening dusk, whose wisdom opens the gates of dawn, whose understanding changes the day's division, whose will sets the succession of seasons and arranges the stars in their places in the sky, who creates day and night, who rolls light before darkness and darkness from light, who makes day pass into night, who distinguishes day from night. Adonai Tzvaot is your name. Living and ever-present God, may a rule be with us forever and ever, baruch ata Adonai, who brings each evening's dusk. And as we also seem to do all the time, we'll sing the second bracha with the Shabbat melody. I apologize. I have been called out the pages in the original Sim Shalom. And the Lev Shalaym is in front of us. We are now in the original Sim Shalom, towards the bottom of page 204. And we'll read together the second bracha that follows the shma, only in the evening, left-hand side, in the Lev Shalaym, we're on 267. Now, the translation will be different, but the Ashkenyuanu is on page 206, 207, in the Sim Shalom. Allow it together. Allow us, Adonai our God, to sleep peacefully. Awaken us to life, O sovereign. Spread over us your canopy of peace. Restore us with your good counsel and save us for the sake of your name. Shield us. Remove from us enemies, pestilence, sword, starvation, and sorrow. Remove the evil forces that surround us. Shelter us in the shadow of your wings, for you, God, watch over and deliver us. And you are sovereign, merciful, and compassionate. Ensure our going and our coming for life and peace now and forever. Baruch ata Adonai, eternal guardian of your people, Israel. We rise as we continue with the Amida individually. We, in the original Sim Shalom, are on page 210 to 11, and page 270 here in the Lev Shalaym. Oh, se shalom im Romav. Hu yas se shalom aleinu. Ve'al kol Yisrael. Ve'im ru'im ru'amen. Ya se shalom, ya se shalom. Shalom aleinu, ve'al kol Yisrael. Ya se shalom, ya se shalom. Shalom aleinu, ve'al kol Yisrael. Ve'al kol yosh vete vel, ve'im ru'amen. And we remain standing as we continue with aleinu. Ka'adu b'turach ha'adonai yam loch le'alam v'ad. Ve'nehem arvah yadonai. La'melach al kol ha'aretz. Bayom ha'u. Bayom ha'u. Yeh adonai yachad. Ushamoh. 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 And just before Kadosh, we offer a prayer for Neil's father, George. He's kor elohim et nishmat. Gershon Ben Harav Natan Vidvora, she halach la'olamoh. Inanimi mishpachto mit palalat badas karat nishmatoh. Anatihi navsho tze'ra b'tze'ra chaim utihi menuchatoh kavod. Sova smachot ha'panach ha'naimot b'minchan netzach. May God remember the soul of George Salon, who has gone to his eternal home. In loving testimony to his life, his family pledges to help perpetuate ideals important to him. Through such deeds and through prayer and remembrance, is his soul bound up in the bond of life. May we all prove ourselves worthy of the gift of life and the many other gifts with which our loved ones have blessed us. May these moments of meditation strengthen the ties that link us to their memories and to our entire family. May George rest forever in dignity and peace. May George rest forever in dignity and peace and let us say amen. And the words of the Kaddish. This concludes our service and as always, I really want to thank everyone for participating this evening. We really appreciate it. Also a reminder that tomorrow evening, we have another yard site Mignon. As Sandy Supaznik will be marking yard site for her father. For those who are participating in the talk tonight on abortion in Jewish tradition, just stay on. Because this is the link as well for the talk and I don't think we have any other yard sites this week.
Thank you everyone for coming.
Pardon me? Oh, sorry Neil.
Just thanking everybody for coming.
Yep, good to see everybody. Stay healthy, stay warm.
Rabbi, my father's is Friday.
Okay, Friday. So Joanne, so our regular service is at six thirty and Joanne will be marking a yard site for her father. And rest of the week, as usual, study in Parshata Shavua on Friday at noon and then services six thirty and Friday night, ten o'clock in the morning, still only online. And then six fifteen, I believe, for Hafdal next Saturday night. So I'll get started in a few minutes. You can run, get a drink of water, coffee, stops, whatever. Trying to figure out how to set up here. Okay, let me just get the mouse. I'm going to see if I can bring this a little bit closer. Sorry, just trying to figure out how long the cord will reach. Okay. Hopefully everyone can see the sources here. That should be pretty clear. So you still have three minutes before we're going to get started. I'm actually going to get some water. Excuse me? Can unmute yourselves and schmooze a little bit, it's alright.
Rabbi, it is so chilly in Florida. People are walking around with winter coats.
It's crazy or sixty-five.
Forty was forty something degrees.
Ooh.
But after we said no snow this week, it's snowing now.
Oh yeah? I saw this, this woman was walking and she literally had a winter coat with the hood on and tied underneath her neck. Crazy, got the heat on.
Marlene, when I lived in Australia for a year, I arrived in the winter, which of course was our summer. Southern hemisphere and people were in heavy parkas. They were bundled up with scarves and it was like sixty-two degrees.
Is that right?
It was like a beautiful spring day, but to them, this was winter.
They start wearing their winter coats earlier than I feel it's necessary. Although, to tell you the truth, even in Ottawa. I remember, I think it was my first year in Ottawa, I was doing an unveiling. And I, it was beginning of November and I wasn't wearing a coat and I had my suit on. Part of it was because Alison and the girls hadn't yet come and my winter stuff was back in Detroit. But, you know, it was a fall day and someone said, you know, Rabbi, it gets cold in Ottawa. I know that, but not yet. It was really quite temperate. I could never understand why they were always complaining about the weather. They were proud of the fact that they had the coldest capital in the world.
Oh, really?
Yeah, but.
You're not doing Moscow?
Yeah, I guess so. It can get really cold in Ottawa.
Yeah.
They're obsessed with wind chill too. I was expecting during the summer, I was going to hear, well, they would use Celsius. Well, it's going to be thirty-seven today, but there's a lot of winds, which probably going to feel like thirty-four.
Years ago, a friend and I, when I was living in Ohio, went down to Florida for vacation in like the end of, I think it was the end of April. And when we left Ohio, they had four inches of snow on the ground. They had to de-ice the plane before we got there. But we got down to Florida and the next day, we went to the beach. And we went in the water and we're swimming and Holly's brother, who lived in Florida and had for about the last ten or eleven years, was sitting there with a line coat, a scarf on, huddled up against the dunes, shivering, telling us we were freaking crazy and we were all going to die of frostbite.
That is funny. Well, Mark, when he comes to Florida, he can't accept if it's cold. So I mean, no matter what, it's, you know, he puts a short sleeve shirt on and today, today he's so chilled, I said to him, just put a sweatshirt on, you know, you have to give in if it's chilly. But it's the mindset, you know, that you're in Florida and you have to wear a short sleeve, you know, or, but we got socks on and it's just.
Yeah, one of the biggest businesses in San Francisco is selling sweatshirts. Because everyone assumes that, oh, they're in San Francisco, it's California, it's summertime. By the river, if you're down by the water, you know, and especially everyone wants to go to the pier and, you know, the
Right.
It's chilly with the wind.
Yeah, and that water is ice cold.
Oh yeah, I don't go in, I didn't go in the water, but.
Well, the Pacific Ocean, even, even like down around Los Angeles and San Diego. I'd want a wet suit to go swimming. It's so much colder than it is here, which, you know, just seems kind of counterintuitive because while we're much further north.
Yes.
Right, but you go to the ocean here, it's way warmer than it is here because I've been in, you know, been out there in like August, September, the times where you think, oh, this would be really nice and warm. And I've gotten as far as like wading into it up to my ankles and I'm like, yeah, that's it, I'm not going any further.
Okay, I think we can get started now. I think everyone who's going to be here is here. Um, so I wanted to cover the topic of abortion, one, because it's so much in the news. And people are, you know, those who are in favor of maintaining the permission for abortion are deeply concerned that Roe v Wade is going to be overturned. And there are many people who are hoping that Roe v Wade will be overturned. But we should know what our perspectives are on abortion. Now, there's a lot. And like anything else in Judaism, it's complicated. But, you know, we'll at least look at some of the basic sources so that we can have a familiarity of, you know, how we look at this, which is very different than certainly the Christian community. So first of all, we as Jews are often unaware, I'm going to write now, just read a few introductory words from my teacher Elliot Dorff in his book Matters of Life and Death, A Jewish Approach to Modern Ethics. And he has a brief section on abortion. And he says, Jews are often unaware of the fact that in most cases Judaism forbids abortion because they have heard correctly that Jewish law requires abortion in some cases and permits it in others. That fact leads them mistakenly to think that abortion is permitted at will when in point of fact Jewish law generally forbids abortion. Don't always realize that, but it is true. So specifically, Jewish law requires abortion when the woman's life or health, physical or mental, is threatened by the pregnancy. Jewish law permits abortion when the risk to the woman's life or health, again, physical or mental, is greater than that of a normal pregnancy, but not so great as to constitute a clear and present danger to her. The fetus does not attain the full rights and protections of a human being until birth. Specifically, when the forehead emerges, or if it is a breach birth, specifically when most of the body emerges. The mother, of course, has full human status. Consequently, if the fetus threatens the life or health of the mother, then it may, and in some cases, must be aborted. And we're going to look at some of those sources. Any questions or thoughts just before we start? Okay, so here, these are a number of sources put together by one of my colleagues, Daniel Rutenberg, who works for the National Council of Jewish Women and has been doing a lot of material surrounding abortion and the law and what's going on. So we're very grateful for her, for assembling these sources. We're probably not going to look at all of them. But at least we'll glance at some of them to get the picture. So first of all, coming up in this week's Torah portion of Vichpatim, you have a very clear law. He who fatally strikes a man shall be put to death. Pretty clear. If you kill someone, you're liable for death. And one of the things that stands out in Jewish law in comparison to ancient Near Eastern law is that the only thing that is worth a life is another life. You can't pay money to get out of the death penalty. You know, it's, if you've killed someone, if you murdered someone, that is definitely, the punishment is death. But then, in the verse after that, we have a statement where a woman miscarries or something like that. When men fight and one of them pushes a pregnant woman and a miscarriage results, but no other damage ensues. The one responsible shall be fined according as the woman's husband may exact from him, the payment to be based on reckoning.
Reckoning.
Reckoning, yeah. But if other damage ensues, and we're talking here about the death of the mother. If the, if the pregnant woman is killed, then the Natata Nefesh Tachat Nafesh, the penalty shall be life for life. And then the famous line, eye for eye, tooth for tooth, hand for hand, foot for foot, burn for burn, wound for wound, bruise for bruise. Okay, so we have a juxtaposition of these two laws. Very clearly, if someone commits murder, one kills another human being, the punishment is death. But if someone causes a miscarriage, if the woman is okay, the punishment is not death, but a fine. What might that lead us to believe about the status of the fetus in Jewish law?
It's not considered to be a full human being yet.
Exactly. It is not yet considered to be a full human being. And we'll see that in the next few sources. So here we have one from the Talmud. With the words in black here in the translation are the actual words that appear in the Talmud and the regular. And uh, the regular, the unbolded uh print are just kind of words of explanation to uh, explain the Talmud. Would, would anybody else like to read? Well, I'm welcome to. In case, okay, thank you.
So go ahead, Ali.
In cases of capital law, the dispute concerning such a prohibition is with regard to the issue that is the subject of the dispute between Rabbi Yehuda Hadnessi and the rabbis.
Okay, so first of all, they're talking about something and they're saying, well, actually, this is really the subject of an argument between Rabbi Yehuda Hadnessi, uh, who, the editor of the Mishna, who is known as Rebbe, uh, and the rabbis, as it is taught in a Baraita, in an early rabbinic teaching. Go on.
That Rabbi Yehuda Hadnessi says, with regard to that which is written, if men struggle and they hurt a pregnant woman, and if there shall be a tragedy, you shall give a life for a life. The reference is to a monetary payment for the life that he took. The tragedy referenced is the unintentional killing of the mother.
So again, the concern here is the mother and it's not the lost fetus. I mean, it's, you know, you it's still not a good thing, you know, one has to pay a fine. But again, there's a sense that the fetus is not a full human being. Um, and we go from the Talmud to the Mishna Torah, Rambam's Law Code. Did you read one more?
Okay. A Mishna Torah, one who injures a person or property.
Yeah, that's just where it is in the Mishna Torah and um
Oh.
Uh, Rambam's Law Code.
One who strikes a woman and causes her to miscarry, even though this wasn't his intent, he must pay the value of the fetus to the woman's husband and damage and pain to the woman.
Okay, again, here it's monetary payment. It's not, uh, it's not considered taking a life. So we see it from the Bible itself into the Talmud, into subsequent legal codes. Now, so then the question is, you know, at what point uh does a fetus what point is it viewed as a full human being? Um, so here we go to the Mishna. And I'm sorry, this one's a little bit graphic. Would somebody else like to read, someone with a strong stomach?
If a woman is having trouble giving birth, they cut up the child in her womb and brings it forth limb by limb because her life comes before the life of the child. But if the greater part has come out, one may not touch it. For one may not set aside one, one person's life for that of another.
So basically, the woman's life takes precedent until
Until most of the child comes out.
Right. You know, once the child comes out, then both lives are equal and it's really in the hands of heaven. Uh, and let's uh go a little bit further. Um, again, from Tom Uticuliter turn, actually, it's already Rashi's commentary on the Talmud. Did somebody have a question? You know, feel free.
I was gonna say, at what point is it considered out?
Um, as they said up here, um the greater part, basically the forehead, once the head comes out, then that's considered to be out. Um, in fact.
What happens if the baby is partway out or? Yeah, if the forehead comes out and the rest of the baby doesn't come? Do they kill the mother to get the baby? Or how do they do that?
Um, I think they would, uh, I don't, you know, know that specific answer, to be quite honest. My guess is that uh they would do what they need to do. If the child could live, they would probably try and save the child. But if it seems that the child is not going to live, they would unquestionably uh choose the life of the mother. And also, um, and I think uh I just, uh, sorry, I just yeah, um. So again, Elliot had marked here when I, the section I had met that I read in the beginning, the fetus does not attain the full rights and protections of a human being until birth, specifically when the forehead emerges or if it is a breach birth, when most of the body emerges.
Rabbi, that's one of the reasons many Orthodox women pick Jewish physicians. Because that decision needs to be made. They want them to make the best medical decision at the time of whether it should be the mother or the child.
Yeah, that, that would make sense.
That's, that was what I've been told anyway.
Uh, yeah, also, um, I don't, I don't know if we're gonna come across it in the sources, but the reality is that um, non-Jews are not allowed to perform an abortion. Now, obviously, you know, we go from medical care to non-Jews. So there's really no problem with a non-Jewish doctor uh, performing abortion if it's required, if it's, if it's necessary. There's no, no question about that. Um, but in general, that would not be permitted. And, you know, I, I haven't studied that question in great detail. I suspect that some of it was uh due to uh some of the oppression they may have uh felt at the hand of the Romans uh, or other uh different non-Jewish groups. Okay, similar idea. Keep going here with Rashi's commentary.
Um, okay, its head came out. With a woman that is experiencing difficulty giving birth and is in mortal danger. And it is taught in the first section of this teaching. The midwife extends her hand and cuts it up and extracts the pieces. As the entire time that it has not gone out into the air of the world, it is not considered a soul. And so it is possible to kill it and to save its mother. But when its head came out, we cannot touch it to kill it as it is like a born baby. And we do not push off one soul for the sake of another.
Yeah, so um, that uh touches on a little bit, you know, one of the issues that is very much a concern for Christianity. Uh, the sense of when does the soul enter the body? And that's really not necessarily an issue for the Jewish community. It's not that we don't talk about it, by the way. Um, there are sources on when the soul enters, but they're not as prominent. And, you know, they are, I would say, non-legal sources. They really come from the agada, the non-legal parts. So for example, uh, in one story in the Talmud, they have a discussion between Roman Emperor Antoninus and Rebbe, Rebbe Ura Nasi. Antoninus said to Rebbe, from when is the soul and the shama endowed in man? From the time of conception or from the time of the embryo's formation? Rebbe replied, from the time of formation. The story goes on, the emperor demurred. Can meat remain three days without salt and not putrefy? You must concede that the soul enters at conception. Rabbi later said, Antoninus taught me this and scripture supports him. And he brings in a verse from Eho. And there's another version of the story in the Midrash itself, not even in the Talmud. Um, when Antoninus asked the question, from when is the soul endowed man? From the time he leaves his mother's womb or from before that time? Rabbi replied, from the time he leaves his mother's womb. So, you know, here we have two positions, even though we may later agree with Antoninus, there are two positions already that one says it's when the fetus begins to be formed. Uh, or not until the body comes out, which is very much almost uh implied in what Rashi writes.
With regards, with regards to this last sermon, it would almost suggest that if the baby is only partially out, the head is already extended and, and it can't come out fully and the mother is gonna die, you can't do anything with the baby and you can't do anything with the mother. And they would both be uh, uh, they would both die.
Uh, possibly. No, because there, there is a sense that, and of course, many of these sources are coming before modern medicine. And we'll look at some uh, modern sources that um you know, they, they couldn't, obviously couldn't do the things they could do. And they, they did feel that at a certain point, it's in God's hands. We were gonna try and rescue both the mother and the child and each one takes its chances in the world, as it were. So now uh another teaching along these lines. Because there's, you know, it's not just that a uh the fetus is not a full person. Um, there's also a question about a newborn baby. Uh, whether or not a baby is what we call bar kaima, uh, that is capable of surviving, is capable of living. And as many of you know, that when, you know, God forbid, a child dies within the first thirty days, there is traditionally uh no formal mourning, uh, no formal service. Now, today, you know, for the emotional health and support, the psychological support of the family was, had such a terrible loss, we generally do do ceremonies or some type of ceremony. Um, so there's an awareness that that's still a tremendous loss, but technically by Jewish law, uh, you know, someone that is not what we call ben kaima here or bar kaima, you know, one that can survive, you know, there are different, uh, there's a different perspective. With somebody else, uh, now here, he's commenting, uh, this is Michelte de Rebbe Ishmael, the early rabbinic commentary on the Book of Exodus. And he's commenting on the line, the line previous uh to the line about uh the, if someone caused a miscarriage. Would someone like to read? Any volunteer?
I'll read, Rabbi. And if, and if a person strikes any nefesh of a person and he dies, he shall be put to death. I might think that an eight-month birth, who is destined to die, is also included. It is therefore written, if one strikes a man whereby we are apprised that he is not liable unless he kills one who is destined to live.
Yeah, so basically, it's talking about the fetus. So that um, it's an eight-month birth. The child, uh, you know, again, uh, premature infants didn't necessarily last long, as thank God, today we are capable of uh keeping them alive. So there too, you know, if a child is less than the full term, it's under, you know, it's still not considered a full person. Um, also the fetus itself. What is the study, status of a fetus at different points? And how is it uh considered? And uh, here Rabbi Rutenberg has a comment. Modern postkey, modern halalic authorities count the forty days noted in the text below from conception. Given that our contemporary medical establishment counts pregnancy from the last menstrual period, that would land the end of the forty days at around seven to eight weeks gestation as we count them today. So just a little note. Okay, now here again, we're back into the Mishna. And Jody, want to continue?
If a woman miscarried on the fortieth day, she need not be concerned that it was a valid childbirth. On the forty-first day, she sits as for both a male and a female and as for menstruate.
Yeah, so basically, her period of ritual impurity would be the same as for them. As it would be after birth. But before forty days, if she has a miscarriage, you know, she would not be considered ritually impure. She wouldn't, uh, and yeah, so, sorry, go on.
No. Uh, Rabbi Ishmael says, if she miscarried on the forty-first day, she sits as for a male and as for menstruate. But if on the
Particular type amount of time?
But if on the eighty-first day, she sits as for a male and a female and a menstruate. Because a male is fully fashioned on the forty-first day and a female on the eighty-first day. But stages day, the fashioning of the male and the fashioning of the female both take forty-one days.
Yeah, so basically, they go the number of forty-one. But again, it's the sense that uh, for the first forty days, the fetus is really not considered anything. Um, and that, you know, if, if the miscarriage occurs uh within the first forty days, you know, there, I mean, the woman is not even considered ritually impure that she, where she would be when she gave birth. Okay, um, uh, we can skip this uh, next, the, the important um, comment here, they're talking about uh, you know, when someone would uh immerse, what other things would be permitted, not permitted, but um here's the statement. And if she is pregnant until forty days from conception, the fetus is merely water. It is not yet considered a living being and therefore does not disqualify its mother from partaking of truma. That's the issue they're dealing with. But this is the key line. Um, I just saw it up here. Maya Ba'almahe, talking about the fetus, it's just mere water within the first forty days. That's, that's just from the perspective of Jewish law. I mean, obviously, it's uh, you know, if today, we may have some different perspectives. Um, and here is uh another example, which uh comes from the Talmud and Chulun, which is really dealing with issues of Kashrut. Um, but we'll see how it's applied as well in terms of human beings. So go on, Jody.
Um, Rabbi, she asks, but if a treifah cannot become pregnant, that which we learned
In other words, if a treif animal, a treifah here is an animal that is not kosher, if that particular animal cannot become pregnant.
That which we learned in a Baraita is difficult. With regard to the offspring of a treifah, Rabbi Eli Azar says that it shall not be sacrificed on the altar. And Rabbi Yehoshua says that it may be sacrificed.
Okay, so we have, you know, the whole context is not necessarily all that important. They're discussing uh uh, treifah, the non-kosher animal, can it be sacrificed in the altar or not? Um, and there, they also talk about an issue here. If a kosher animal is impregnated by a non-kosher animal. So, you know, they, they know a lot more about animal husbandry uh than I do, certainly. Okay, so now we're, we're getting to the uh more essential part for our purposes. Go on.
Uh, with regard to what case do they disagree? It must be with regard to a case where the mother animal became pregnant and only afterward was rendered a treifah.
In other words, initially, it was kosher, but for whatever reason, it became treif. But it's pregnant. So then the question is, what about its fetus?
Rabbi Eli Azar holds that a fetus is considered like the thigh of its mother and is rendered a treifah as part of its body. And Rabbi Yehoshua holds that a fetus is not considered like the thigh of its mother.
Okay, so what is the status of a fetus here?
But this is an animal, it's different.
Yeah, that well, but they're just using this as an example, animals are also pregnant, you know, or can get pregnant. And they're talking about what is the status of the fetus is considered like what?
The mother.
My name?
The thigh of the mother.
Does it mean the thigh of its mother?
It's as if it's part of the mother, it's
Exactly, yeah, so you know, up to forty days, it's like a but even afterwards, it's still just, it's part of the mother. Okay, and this, uh here's where it comes more into the uh, again, it's a little complicated. Uh but now they're bringing it into the human realm. Go on, Jody, one more.
One of them said, in accordance with whose opinion is this? Is it in accordance with the opinion of Rabbi Yehuda Hanasi, who says, with regard to one who emancipates half of his slave, the slave acquires freedom for half of himself. And one of them added an explanation and said, what is the reasoning of Rabbi Yehuda Hanasi for this ruling?
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, the whole thing seems a little odd. To me, like, how do you free half a slave, like, you know, you can do whatever you want with your right hand, but the left hand, that's that's under our control, you know, it's it's kind of an odd. And I don't, I never really studied all those particular laws, but this is uh where a previous principle is applied to a human fetus. Keep going.
He holds, he holds, a fetus is considered as its mother's thigh, for example, a part of its mother's body. And it is as though the master transferred ownership of one of her limbs to her. Since the maidservant is pregnant, the child is considered to be a part of her. And it as, and it is as though he emancipated a portion of her body. Therefore, the mother is not acting as an agent for the child and this halacha does not present a difficulty for Rabbi Yochanan's opinion.
Yeah, so again, the whole halakhic issue is not as crucial as the idea that the fetus is merely a part of the mother. And we know of that much, uh, you know, much more practically is if a pregnant woman converts and she enters into the mikvah, when her child is born, the child is Jewish. So uh, you know, and that's, you know, probably one of the clearest cases. Uh here's uh another case, which is not as pleasant. But you know, it could, it certainly could come up and it and it raises certain moral issues. Uh would somebody else like to read?
I'll read, Rabbi.
Okay, thank you. Arlene, no, I don't know, I'm looking at you, Arlene, you're on my screen, I know, go ahead, sorry.
If a woman is about to be executed. Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
If a woman is about to be executed, they do not wait for her until she gives birth. But if she had already sat on the birth stool, they wait for her until she gives birth. If a woman has been put to death, one may use her hair. If an animal has been put to death, it is forbidden to make use of it.
Okay, I I I don't really know the context of the the end of that. Particularly the use of the woman's hair, that I I that's gotta be under discussion in the Talmud because it just does not sound right. But it's interesting here about, you know, that even if a woman is pregnant, they would still apply the death penalty. Because again, they're thinking of the fetus as part of the woman. Uh you know, again, we have to recognize when we read this, the rabbis are discussing law. And they discuss it, you know, from every possible perspective, they bring in all kinds of cases. You know, it's uh, it's possible that the law, you know, if you read Talmud, we're also reading uh the edited notebooks of the rabbis, so we have a lot of texts that you know, could be totally theoretical. And more as thought exercises than practical halacha. But here we have a little commentary. Uh yeah, this is just the Gemara on the on that Mishnah and it's talking about that uh clarifies that the fetus is not the property of the husband. And as Rabbi Rutenberg writes here, Gemara on the Mishnah directly above it clarifies that the fetus is not the property of the husband. And in the process, offers a powerful statement that has real resonance for today. It's obvious, it's her body. Which is, which is kind of interesting. So just just something to keep there. And this next case, uh it's similar type of, well, yeah, we should read it cuz it brings in an important idea and why, you know, the uh fetus uh would be, would one would have to abort the fetus. So um June, you want to continue reading?
Sure. Rav Huna says, if a minor was pursuing another person in order to kill him, it is permitted to save the pursued through the pursuer's life. That is to say, one is permitted to save the pursued party by killing the minor who is pursuing him. And one does not say that since the minor lacks halakhic competence, he is not subject to punishment.
Because normally in Jewish life, uh Jewish law, a uh a minor is not considered to have legal competence, as I hear, halakhic competence. And you often have a category of cheresh shoteh the katan, um a person who is deaf, uh a person who is, uh they used to translate it as imbecile, we wouldn't use such a term today. Modern Hebrew shoteh is fool, but you know, they're talking about someone who was mentally deficient in some way. Cheresh, so shoteh the katan. They're talking about people who may not have the intellectual capacity to understand their halakhic competence. Nonetheless, if a minor is trying to kill someone, he can be stopped, even by killing him. Go on.
The Gemara explains, Rav Huna maintains that a pursuer in general does not require forewarning. And there is no difference with regard to this matter between an adult and a minor. The essence of the matter is rescuing the pursued party from death. And therefore, the pursuer's liability liability to receive the death penalty is irrelevant. Rav Hista raised an objection to Rav Huna from a Baraita.
Yeah, Baraita is an early rabbinic teaching.
If a woman was giving birth and her life was being endangered by the fetus, the life of the fetus may be sacrificed in order to save the mother. But once his head has emerged during the birthing process, he may not be harmed in order to save the mother because one's life may not be pushed aside to save another life. If one is permitted to save the pursued party by killing the minor who is pursuing him, why is this so? The fetus is a pursuer who is endangering the his mother's life.
In other words, why doesn't it continue even when the head is emerging? And this might be somewhat of an answer to to your question. Go ahead.
The Gemara answers, this is not difficult, as it is different there with regard to the woman giving birth, since she is being pursued by heaven. Since the fetus is not acting of his own volition and endangering his mother of his own will, his life may not be taken in order to save his mother.
I E. when the head comes out. So uh you can agree or disagree with some of the points being made here, but again, we see the fetus is not considered a full person. A fetus, you know, even the first forty days is considered mere water. It's considered a limb of the mother, not uh and uh if it's endangering the mother's life up until the head emerges, you really have to do it, the mother's life takes precedence. Um there was a case in New York a number of years ago that uh there was a woman who was in a coma. And the Catholic hospital, the hospital would not allow the abortion. And, you know, it was a Jewish woman. And, you know, by Jewish law, there was absolutely no question that to save the woman's life, the uh the child, the fetus could be aborted, but they wouldn't allow it, it was really, really quite terrible. And here, the this next one, uh they again, talk about the primacy of the mother's life, uh where the fetus is considered a rodeif, a pursuer. And it uh it may be aborted either by surgery or with drugs, uh as they mentioned here. Now let's just take a a look at a few modern views. Uh any questions first, anything anyone wants to raise?
Rabbi, just a quick question, they keep looking in terms of the fetus, is that the term that is used now, for a reference to an embryo? That is too scientific and too modern.
Yeah, um although, I don't remember if it's really the same word. Uh generally, they're they're talking, it's it's called an ubar, which is a fetus.
Unborn.
Um yeah, I don't have to check into that one.
Oh, it is just an idle curiosity.
No, it's, you know, we would, we would probably make certain distinctions that they wouldn't. But you'll see, as you know, even uh as we move into the modern period or, you know, relatively modern, here we have the eighteenth century. Uh the very famous Rabbi Jacob Emdin, very famous for his halakhic work. So uh June, you want to continue with this one? Because this raises a very important concern today. And again, um as Elliot mentioned, when I read his section in the beginning, we aren't, abortion is generally not permitted. There are times when it's required and other times when it would be permitted. And this is when we're now moving into the area of when it might be permitted.
The questioner asks about an adulterous married woman who is pregnant, is a good, is a good question. It appears to me to permit her to abort. And even in the case of a legitimate fetus, there is reason to be lenient if there is a great need, as long as the fetus has not begun to emerge. Even if the mother's life is not in jeopardy, but only so as to save her from an evil associated with it that would cause her great pain.
Yeah, so she became uh pregnant through an adulterous union, first of all, that child would be a mom's heir. Uh you know, a bastard in Judaism is not someone born out of wedlock. It's someone who was born of a forbidden union, such as an adulterous union. And you know, what is Rabbi Emdin's concern here? What, what, why is he being willing to permit permit the, an abortion in this case?
Her emotional health.
Yeah. That's very interesting. Because, you know, it's it's one thing to define a fetus as being an actual physical danger to the mother's life. Now it's not so clear. Now it's an area of emotions and psychology, which really that's not so clear cut. And by the way, this is also where you have some differences of opinion within Jewish law as to when they would permit it, but here already you see someone, a very well-known Rabbi uh back in the eighteenth century, already thinking about the psychological health of the mother.
Rabbi?
Yes.
That would almost sanction an adulterous relationship because it would essentially say there will be no consequences, they, those consequences can be mitigated by abortion.
Yes and no. Uh because first of all, she would then be forbidden by Jewish law to her husband. Could also be dealing with what is likely true, but no one has absolute proof. You know, what do we do in in contemporary times? The reality is, we don't um kill people who are guilty of adultery. Even in cases that we know there's no question. Um and, you know, to, uh, you know, one of the what Jewish law struggles with and what contemporary legal authorities deal with is the whole question of the mom's heir. Because technically, a mom's heir cannot marry within the Jewish community, could not be part of the Jewish community. And, you know, then the child has all kinds of consequences, which are not his or her fault. The fault is with the parents. So it's really the child who suffers much more than the parents. And there are many different elements in halacha that trying to get around the the terrible uh case of a mom's heir.
I ask a question. Yeah. So let's say in in Texas with the situation that exists now and you're Jewish and you need to have an abortion for what reason, but the state is saying you can't. I mean, can you sue because it's an infringement on your religious rights? That if your religion says you can have it and they're saying not, I mean.
Violation of church and state.
Yeah, there are, um, you know, there probably are legal uh avenues that can be taken. But it's also rather difficult. You know, and especially if a woman's life is at stake. You know, time may also be of the essence. So, you know, to bring a whole legal case, it might be too late. So I mean, I, and you know, we're kind of getting into the sense of like, why many Jews, even though we don't normally permit abortion, certainly not just abortion on demand or abortion as uh birth control. Even though we don't necessarily permit abortion, why we would be in favor of choice? Because it should be up to the, and I'll read the, we'll read the section from the the latest statement from the Committee on Jewish Law and Standards. But, you know, what we would feel about why we would promote uh freedom of choice.
One thing to remember about the about the Texas law, it doesn't stop you from going to get an abortion somewhere. But you can be sued by another Texan for doing so. So I would wonder if and going back to the point, it's just a great question, uh that um if somebody goes and gets an abortion, you know, say in Arkansas, uh and then they get sued by a couple of Texans, that that would not be even downright anti-Semitic.
Oh, yes.
So, yeah, that has a great question.
Yeah, it is a great question, but you know, it's also, you know,
You can defend, what I'm getting at is you can defend it after the fact is you can't be, the Texan can't take action against another Texan for an abortion until they actually go and make the moves to have the abortion, which obviously is already taken care of.
Right. But of course, they can uh bring, sue against someone who helps the person have the abortion. And that, you know, and how do they continue, what is helping?
Yeah, but again, yeah, that's that's a satirical law, but you know, it's, if you get a bunch of Jews together helping each other, cuz the mother needs an abortion for her own health. Somebody sues you for it, that's an infringement of my religious beliefs.
Yes.
You could be tied up in court with legal fees for ten years.
And of course, for some of the people who are pushing for this, they want a Christian country and the country should run by Christian ideals.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, mind you, I'm I'm not talking about, um, you know, many Christians who simply oppose abortion. But those who have uh, you know, like uh Flynn, who uh, you know, said, we should have one religion in this country. Do you remember that statement a few weeks ago? Do you remember that statement a few weeks ago? So, but again, just a couple more, how as we move into the modern world, that people are willing to consider. The emotional health of the woman. Um, you want to just read these two? Uh, you can go on, June. June?
Yeah, no, no, I had to unmute myself.
Okay.
You're on mute.
Mental health risk has, has been definitely equated with physical health risk. The woman in danger of losing her mental health unless the pregnancy is interrupted would therefore accordingly qualify.
Okay, and then this other response?
It is clear that abortion is not permitted without reason. That would be destructive and frustrating of the possibility of life. But for a reason, even if it is a slim reason, such as to prevent disgrace. Then we have precedent and authority to permit it.
Yeah, so here are a number of statements, uh. That, um. Are pretty open, you know, they're being uh, much more flexible in defining what is a threat to the mother's health. It may not, it's not necessarily what we'd call sakhanatana fesho, a threat to her life per se. But, um, but even to her quality of life. And here is a contemporary rabbi, um, Elias or Waldenberg, whose collection seats Elias are a very important. Collection of modern tishuvot, and this is what he has to say.
If there is a danger to the mother from continuing the pregnancy, one should permit abortion without hesitation. Also, if the health is poor and to cure her or to relieve her from great pain, it is. Necessary to abort the fetus. Even if she is not in actual danger. There is room to permit it based on the halachic authorities evaluation of the situation.
Yeah, so you know, they're still, you know, we have to evaluate the situation. Uh, with a known halachic authority. On the other hand, they're, they're, they're leaving open their. The possibility for abortion. And these are all orthodox rabbis, you know, we're not talking about. Concern, as we move into the 20th century and you have a conservative movement, you have a reform movement. You know, all of these are orthodox rabbis. But this is, you know, basic, basic Jewish law. Um, and here too, more written by Rabbi Elias or Waldenberg. But let's jump to, uh. Not too long ago, and this is from the proceedings of the Committee on Jewish Law and Standards. Which is the halachic authority for the conservative movement. And this is what he wrote back in 80, 85. Somebody else want to read?
I'll read.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
There is a clear president, president in the tradition to permit abortion of a fetus to save a mother's life. To safeguard her health, or even for a very thin reason, such as to spare her physical pain or mental anguish.
Okay, so, and we have a lot of statements on abortion. From the CJLS, from the Committee on Jewish Law and Standards. That was just one that kind of stood out. Um, and here's another one, very interesting, from Rabbi Aaron Lichtenstein. Who is a very famous, was, passed away unfortunately, a very famous orthodox rabbi, brilliant. Um. And here's what he has to say. Go ahead.
Here it is clear that saving a life is not the only sanction for permitting an abortion. This is evident from the Talmudic passage that permits a nursing mother to cohabitate using. A moch. A barrier of cotton or wool to prevent pregnancy. Since this prohibition is waived to facilitate normal family relations, which is why the. Emission in this context is not wasteful.
Yeah, so basically, this is, you know, talking about sexual relations between a husband and wife. Um, and, you know. When she's a nursing mother, she has a young child, you know, you are allowed. In a certain way to use contraception, that's a, it's a whole nother topic.
It would follow that other ethical and humane factors may also be taken into account. It would seem to me that issues such as.
Kavod habriot.
Kavod habriot, dignity of persons, shalom, bavit.
Bait.
Bait, oh, domestic peace, and tzah. Zohar. Pain, which all carry significant halachic weight in other contexts, should be considered in making these decisions.
Yeah, so here, a contemporary um, orthodox rabbi, I mean, leading orthodox authority, we're not, you know, just. You know, some orthodox rabbi down the street. I mean, this is a major figure in orthodoxy. And he's writing in Tradition, which is the magazine of orthodoxy. So. You know, this is. This is how Judaism approaches these issues, not just conservative, but orthodox and reform. And now, this is the most recent statement our committee has made. Um, as you can see, just. Uh, last month. Um, and they write. That we seek a way to follow our traditions nuanced views on abortion in a multicultural society. Where the principles of different religions must be respected. And those who are pregnant and those who provide healing must have the right to follow their own conscience and religious traditions. Without restricting the right of others to follow their conscience and religious traditions. Jewish tradition values life almost above all else, and very much encourages having children. You know, reality is that uh, overpopulation is not being caused by Jews. So, uh, we should encourage, encourage our children that when they find the right partner, get married. Um, and have children. We need, we need a lot of Jewish children. Uh, however, even when abortion was greatly restricted, if not completely forbidden in the US and the Western world. Rabbis generally upheld a lenient attitude toward abortion when the mother's life or physical or mental health were at stake. Under those circumstances, when it became possible to abort using medication, that became the preferable option. Because it is generally less dangerous than surgery for the woman at the time of the abortion. And with regards with her future ability to procreate. And that's also important, you know, we just, uh, we want people to be able to have children. Um. Tom, do you want to go on? I don't have to read this, you can. Keep going.
I'm on mute.
That said, no, you're fine, we hear you.
Oh, okay. That said, Jewish law also permits abortion to be done surgically. When the stage of the pregnancy and the mother's health, both psychologically and psychologically. Uh, require that, require that. New medical technologies have developed that offer data about the fetus. And our rabbis permit abortion in cases where a child would be born so ill as not to survive long. Or would be severely and permanently disabled. Recently, certain abortion procedures have become the subject of political polemic, polemic, polemics. Nonetheless, keeping in mind. Mind the principles and guidelines of Jewish law based on the Mishnah. We uphold the use of surgical abortion techniques even in the last stages of pregnancy. Late-term intact dilation and extraction abortion. When that is necessary to preserve the mother's life or health, or her ability to give birth in the future.
And by the way, um. There, there are disagreements in Jewish tradition about when one can do an abortion. Um, and. You know, even though we're seeing a great deal of openness. Uh, for the need for abortion. Um, even when the mother's life isn't threatened, or physically threatened. Um. It doesn't mean that Judaism, you know, okay, you feel you need an abortion, great. No, it still requires some consideration, and abortion is not necessarily in any way, shape or form, something that Judaism favors. It just recognizes reality that, uh, you know, when someone's. Health is at risk, that's, that becomes a serious issue. Go on, sorry?
The United States Supreme Court held in Roe and in Casey. That states are permitted to impose restrictions on a woman's right to abort based on fetal viability outside the womb. Thanks to advances in neonatology. The time during pregnancy when fetal viability occurs has moved earlier from the third trimester. The 29th week. Out of 40, as in Roe, to as few as 23 weeks. The earlier that a baby is born, however, the less likely that it will survive. And the more likely that if it does survive, it will suffer from abnormalities. Many of which cannot be corrected. No hard and fast prognosis applies, or even babies born in full term may suffer from abnormalities of various sorts. And only very severe illness would be taken into consideration by Jewish law. Furthermore, as Chief Justice Roberts is quoted as saying. If the issue in American law is no longer viability because of complications. But rather the ability of the woman to choose whether to have a child or not. How long during the pregnancy should that right apply? Neither viability nor a woman's right to choose is base, is the basis of Jewish law on abortion. Although they play a role only indirectly. What matters in Jewish law is the woman's health, life and health, both physical and mental.
Okay, so, those are just some of the sources. That, uh. We utilize and have been utilized for a long time in terms of talking about abortion. The permissible ability or requirement of abortion, um. And I should also mention that there's one other thing, why, you know, can a woman just get an abortion? Uh, again, this is from Rabbi Dorf. The body belongs to God. For Judaism, God owns everything, including our bodies. God lends our bodies to us for the duration of our lives, and we return them to God when we die. Consequently, neither men nor women have the right to govern their bodies as they will. Since God created our bodies and owns them, God can and does assert the right to restrict. How we use our bodies according to the rules articulated in Jewish law. So, uh, you know, obviously, we know the law, the rules for pikuak nefesh, preserving life. Uh, and. There are all kinds of statements as well, and how we should take care of our bodies. Uh, take care of our health, and again, we can't just. Do whatever we want with our bodies. So, you know, even if we say that the ubar, the fetus is just a yarach emo, a limb of its mother. You know, it's still her body, but it's really God's body. It's not just something that we can willy-nilly. Uh, damage or do anything to. Um, you know, that. You know, some people would also argue, uh, in terms of piercings and tattoos, which I didn't bring up, and we talked about that, but. Uh, you know, there, there are some dangers involved with those things. Um, so, you know, one could make a little bit of an argument about that. But, uh, you know, so there you have some of our basic sources on abortion. And our thoughts about it. Uh, not necessarily, you know, we would permit abortion under certain circumstances, although in general, we're not in favor of it. Um, and many of the concerns of, say, the Christian community. Are not our concerns. The reality is that the fetus is not seen as a full human being. Uh, until the head emerges. And there can be extenuating circumstances even late in. Uh, pregnancy in which abortion would be required or permitted.
So Rabbi, if a woman, let's just say a woman is raped, and so. The Jewish law would frown upon the fact that you'd want to get an abortion?
Yeah. I wouldn't necessarily frown on the fact, um, I think that that would come under many of the issues that. Were raised by the rabbis, that first of all, the, uh, the emotional strain, the psychological strain. And as well, you know, the. Uh. Blanking on the word, but. You know, we, we used it, um, talking about, you know, she was the product of an adulterous union, the embarrassment, I mean, you know, I. It's hard for me to imagine that a contemporary rabbi would.
I would think so, yeah.
Now, that doesn't mean that a rabbi wouldn't sit down. Uh, and talk with a woman and try and counsel and make sure that. She is doing what she wants to do. Yes, there's a tremendous amount of embarrassment, then we understand why, uh. A woman who's been raped would want to have an abortion. I don't imagine any of us would have any difficulty with that. On the other hand.
Not the babies.
You know, I can't, uh.
Yeah.
You know, a woman, you know, could very well not want an abortion. Yeah, I, I, I'm not a woman, so I don't think it's really fair for me to comment. But by the way, you know, it's, you know, it's hard to argue, even though there is some evidence of tradition of saying, you know, it's the woman's body. Uh, that's not the primary concern in Judaism. Uh, you know, the argument that. Uh, it's a woman's body, she should decide, that might be a very good argument, but it's a very good argument in American law. It's not necessarily, uh, coming from, uh, Jewish law. Even though, you know, there, there certainly are positions within Jewish law that would. Feel that's appropriate.
Rabbi, I think, if memory serves me correctly, I'm going back more than 35 years to remember this. Uh, but that Anglo-American law did not recognize. An unborn child is having any rights. That is something that only came about pretty much in the last century, around the mid-century. That, you know, while abortions were never. Mainstream anyway, in American medical science. Um, it's only been a religious political discussion since about the 1950s.
Hmm.
Maybe a little bit earlier, but it's, uh, it's somewhat of a, the discussions we're having these days. Are actually a fairly modern thing in Anglo-American law, and when I say Anglo, because it goes way back. That's just civil, and we're talking strictly civil law here.
Hmm.
It just was never really recognized that, and it actually, I was rather interested in seeing some of the things there from. Halachic law, or just commentary that. That fit very closely to what Anglo-American law was up until, as I said, last century.
And, you know, even the, some of the foundations for Anglo-American law, Jewish law is part of it. But also Roman law, that, that, one of the sources said that Roman law didn't see the fetus as having any independent legal. Authority or existence.
And I think it's also a factor of modern medical science, too. But, you know, how far do you stretch it?
So. Back to punishing a pregnant woman, uh, with the, uh, with execution. If I recall correctly, in the English common law, you did not. They did not execute a woman who was pregnant, and if she claimed she was pregnant, it would put a delay on things.
Not just English, but a few other European laws, I think, were the same way.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, Judaism is of course not a fan of capital punishment to begin with. Um. And I think. For all kinds of reasons why someone, I mean, even in Jewish law, would not necessarily. Wants to execute a pregnant woman. Um, but again, you know, by Jewish law, that, you know, if a woman committed a crime of murder. Then. She might be liable for such a, uh. Really, you know, I mean, adultery would technically be. Uh, like, a person guilty of adultery would technically be liable for death.
Stoning was a favorite process.
Um, for adultery, yes. There were four, um, modes of, uh, execution. And I have to be honest, I haven't studied them with great detail. Um, skila, sreifa, harig, vachanek. Um, none of which is particularly pleasant. Um, skila is stoning, which basically was pushing someone off a height. On, you know, so. on, you know, so that's the first step, and then they throw stones on the person. You know, either way, it was just not nice. Uh, sreifa, burning, um, harig, beheading, and chenek, strangling, um, that's not necessarily like hanging, but um pouring hot lead down someone's throat. So. Yeah.
Maybe we should save that for another night.
I mean, you know, the reality is that Judaism was never really into the death penalty. Um, you know, it acknowledges, Jewish law acknowledges uh that, you know, sometimes it's necessary, but you know, as Jewish tradition developed, it certainly didn't like it. So you had uh Rabbi Akiva, another rabbi, you know, they used to call a a Sanhedrin, if it uh, if it put to death one person in seventy years, it was called a bloody Sanhedrin. And they said, if we were on a Sanhedrin, no one would ever have been convicted uh of death. Of course, then another rabbi responded to them, then you would have increased murderers in Israel. It's, you know, it's a, it's a contemporary concern, what do we say about uh, do we believe that the death penalty really is uh an impediment to people committing crimes and vicious crimes? You know, does it, you know, what?
Second time.
What, what does it really uh accomplish?
They don't do it a second time.
Yeah, don't do it a second time. So by the way, the uh classic text um is you can always ask me later, marital, and I don't know if this is coming out straight or backwards, marital relationships, uh, birth control and abortion in Jewish law. It's like the classic text. And uh actually, Rabbi Feldman, who wrote uh this book, has a, an essay where he pretty much summarizes the book, uh, Eli summarizes the position on abortion in another wonderful book by Elliot Dorf, or one of the editors, Contemporary Jewish Ethics and Morality. A reader. And uh it's uh the article by Rabbi Feldman in this is very readable and really kind of covers all the major topics. So, and you know, conservative movement, Orthodox movement, reform movement, we continue to uh write on them. I didn't even, I didn't have a chance, uh, but uh one of my colleagues, uh, one of my uh friends, Rabbi Susan Grossman, um, wrote a paper uh relatively recently, Partial Birth Abortion and the Question of When Human Life Begins. I really wanted to read that one. Um, and uh it passed by uh fourteen voted in favor, one opposed, and four abstained. But uh, so it's still uh, it's still discussed quite a bit.
When people abstain, do they need to explain why?
Pardon me?
When people abstain, do they need to explain why?
I don't really know, because I'm not on the committee. Never been on the committee. Um, all they do is, you know, they tell you who voted in favor, who opposed, who abstained, and it's, it's hard to tell, because sometimes they, they abstain because they well, actually, they may abstain because they agree with the conclusion, but they don't agree with all of the proofs and the way it's presented. Um, or they're, they're not sure. Um, so for example, uh, the people who abstained on this paper are some of my teachers and one of my friends, people who I respect greatly. But they only abstained. Um, uh, but yet the person who opposed it, I also respect tremendously, and I think is one of our very fine uh halakhic thinkers in our movement.
Why you have thinkers, different opinions?
Yeah. And uh, you know, the people who were in favor also. There's some bright people on our uh, that have been on our uh law committee and you know, they uh, and it, and it's interesting sometimes to see that so-and-so abstained, like, really? You know, they would normally be in favor of that, but you know, they're, you know, sometimes they're different papers and sometimes they affirm two positions.
Is there such a thing as a filibuster?
No.
Temple majority.
Yeah, actually, in, you know, for our law committee, um, a uh you know, if you have a certain number of votes, it becomes acceptable within the movement, but if there are enough uh opposing votes, that may also be an accepted opinion within the movement.
That's interesting.
Yeah, I mean, the, the reality is the conservative movement developed in America, its ideological orientation, its ideological beginnings are in Germany and perhaps also in Hungary, uh, in the nineteenth century, but you know, this is kind of American, you have a majority opinion and a minority opinion, and they're both acceptable. Uh, so it sometimes leads to problems, but I used to joke when I was in Kansas City, my uh senior colleague would drive on Shabbat, and I wouldn't. Rabbi Emeritus would, our cantor wouldn't. I said, we're a perfect con, conservative congregation. We really reflect uh all of our positions. Any other questions?
That was very interesting. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for being here.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Stay healthy.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Laila toe.